Just let me know when it's to go. Just go for it then? Yeah, alright. We'll call a meeting to order, reading the district's promise statement. "We promise to provide a supportive environment where unique learning experiences empower all for their chosen life adventure." Are there any additional items for the agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
That's Tim Elke. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That's Sherri Dashner. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries six oh. Recognition of visitors in open forum. We have Michael Roy from the Jamesville Journal here. Nobody else has signed up. Reports and presentations. Superintendent report.
I don't have a whole lot because I've been dealing with resignations and postings of different positions. But I wanted to let you know that we've done some interviewing for the district operations coordinator or the executive to the superintendent, HR. We've made, we've offered that position. It was declined. So we do have the application process still open, and I did get one more application today that I'll be looking into right away tomorrow or this evening yet, and call about interviewing that person if we feel like they're a good fit. For the AD, we've had nine submitted applications. We're looking at bringing in six for interviews later this week, so Wednesday, Thursday, are inter, looking at interviews for that. For our community ed director, we have four fully submitted applications. There are, I can see in the system that there are other applications that people are working on. And then we'll be working, looking to start interviewing for those early next week. Behavior interventionist, we have two completed applications. That's all I can see in there right now are the two completed ones. And then the high school counselor, at this point, we do not have any applications. So we'll keep moving those up to the top of our job searches and everything, trying to get more and more applications for those positions. Then lunch menus, I know lunch has always, has been a hot topic lately, so I met with Gary last week. He already has, this is September's lunch menus. Wanted to give you an opportunity to take a look at them. He is working on October's also right now. The first week is always a different type of week just because of the unknown with the supplies at this time. However, he did mention that he did take chicken off the menu as much as it was before. But I did want to give you an opportunity to look at those, and if you have questions about those or concerns about those, please let me know. Cause I, Wendy and I will be meeting with Gary and Brett from Tahoe later this week. The wall in the media center here, they'll be starting that hopefully next week. It should get permitted by the end of the week. They do have an additional wall they have to put up in Title I room because of fire code. And we have to have an additional exit from here, so they're getting us all of that information right now too. That one should be a very basic, very simple wall for them to put up. But I also thought the one in the media center was going to be basic and simple. My evaluation is coming up, so I will get the information out to Laura. Laura will send it out to the board members. And then you can send all your information back to Laura. So that'll be in the next week or two that I get it to Laura, and then we can hopefully, if we have all board members here in August, we can talk about my evaluation at that time, or if we need to set up a separate meeting, we can do that. And then the last thing that I have is as we're halfway through July already, setting up a time to talk with the two negotiation teams. So we can talk about strategies and information that I have or information that you would like from Wendy and I going into negotiations, so everybody's on the same page. So I'll be sending an email out to those committees with some possible times for us to get together, talk, or start talking through language and just preparing ourselves for negotiations, as we've received letters from all of the groups with the intent to negotiate this fall. I think teachers mentioned that wanting to start early August, so... Are there any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. Six B, budget information. Oh, I didn't realize that. I looked at this today, the cash balances, but didn't see it. I suppose there's really no update because...
Enrollment is...
Yeah, there's nothing...
What we left, I think.
Yeah. So any questions on historical cash balances?
Can I go back just one quick second to ask you a question?
Yep.
So what... What was I, nope, never mind. I remember now. I saw it, so. I was thinking about the art position, the high school one that, where he resigned, but now I remember, yep, we have a person, so, okay.
Yep.
Never mind. It's, like I said, it was a long weekend.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions on the historical cash balance? Alright, any committee reports?
Our policy committee did get together two weeks ago now. With the legislature making the, all of their adjustments and whatnot, they come, came out with a new list of policies for us to update. And you'll notice down below that there are a number of them to look through. I think there's seven on the first reading, and two, or that have significant changes. And there are two without significant changes. So when we get to that point, we can, if there's specific questions about them, we can talk through them. Our policy committee will continue meeting until we get everything up to date also.
Alright, any questions on that? Number seven, the consent agenda, as always, anybody can pull anything out that they wish to. Are there any clarifying questions?
Do we know how long the leave of absence?
For...
For Tori, is it Tori, right?
For Tori.
Yeah.
It's three, twelve weeks.
Okay.
Through February.
No, through Fe, yeah, mid to late February.
And she again is...
Bulldog Academy.
Okay.
Kindergarten.
Any other clarifying questions?
Real quick, just, and Tim had mentioned this also, but Dale Compton did resign. His wife got transferred to Washington, where the company she worked for came from. So he did resign after being hired here. We were able to secure another candidate last week. So we have filled the high school art position, the elementary art position, we were able to fill also with Liz Quavek.
So the, the resolution relating to changing the use of the bond proceeds? So that's, at least on my...
Hold on, that's on...
Wait, yep.
Oh, I'm done one too many, sorry.
Okay. Alright. If no further clarifying questions, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's Sherri Dashner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That's Joni Olson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries six oh. Okay. Eight, old business. Approved resolution relating to changing the authorized use of bond proceeds and calling in election thereon. Do you have a question, Tim?
I was just wondering, did we actually get our verbiage language finalized? Or are we still working on that yet?
Um, I was just, oh, got that email. I was gonna look back to here.
It was from Matt, right?
Yeah, it was from Matt. That was shortly after our last meeting. Okay. Matt did reach out and he spoke with Peter Martin at length about the ballot language. And he said that court cases stated that specific examples giving, given after including are not binding. He further went on to add that an example can help show taxpayers what they may be voting on, but are not required, but they're not required to be given, so...
So they...
And he added that perfectly correct language cannot prevent lawsuits, but we can easily defend our position if we use the funds in a different way, so...
But he still recommended putting the...
He would, he recommended, would use the, would proceed with the language as it was presented originally. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I was just, cause I know we had, I missed the last couple because of softball with Rochelle, so I didn't know for sure if we'd gotten that finalized or not, so...
Any other questions? Now, this is just approving the language on the ballot. We would obviously be educating the community on exactly what that means.
And elders will help us with all of that promoting.
Yeah, cause it says it will increase your taxes, obviously, as, as all those ballots do, so, yeah. Okay. Alright, do we have a motion?
Um, go ahead.
Well, can I, to adopt the resolution, but only at one of the two U's in paragraph one. Says two U's, two U's approximately. I don't know if it's a big deal. But it's in the up above. It's like not actually on the...
Not the ballot reading?
The ballot part, but it's in the resolution part. I mean, I noticed that down below it was fine. I just didn't know if it mattered above if we care.
We're in the, on the first page?
In paragraph, in paragraph one, in the first, yeah. Says the school board proposes two U's, two U's approximately.
It's on the second.
On the second page?
Yes, it is on the second, yeah. But it's paragraph one.
Then it's paragraph one.
Yeah. I mean, well, but the ballot is, no, it doesn't say it.
Did you find it, Wendy?
It's in the first, it's in the first line, number one, first line.
I know, I'm still missing it, but, oh, there, okay, I got it. I see it now. Good catch. So your motion to approve the resolution with the change of removing the duplicate.
Yeah, duplicate two U's.
Yep. Okay, so that's Joni Olson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That's Tim Elke. That's a resolution. Cahill?
Yes.
Elke?
Yes.
Born?
Yes.
Dashner?
Yes.
Fullson?
Yes.
Size? Yes. Motion carries six oh. Nine, new business. Approved contract with SMS for payroll services. Do you want to talk anymore about that, or any questions from anyone?
Yeah, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know Laura and I have talked at length about this. Tim and I have talked at length about this also. Moving forward with it. Try, or work with it for a year as we get new people in their new positions. As Tim and I talked, it is, it may be tough to get that back into a position, but I do think it's worth going through with it this first year to see how everything goes. I did reach out to a couple, or I did try and reach out to a couple other school districts. I got ahold of St. Clair. Right now, they were in the same, they're in the same situation we have been in, where it's between their business manager and the administrative assistant to get payroll done. And he mentioned, within a year, he thinks they'll be contracting out also, because it's just a messy situation for them. But I have reached out to a couple other school districts. I'm hearing, or waiting to hear back from them.
Yeah, and, and I had to apologize to, I didn't get to apologize to you, Laura, but wasted your time, because I just didn't remember what me and Jeremy had talked about in the email that he sent out. But it is, my, my concern is, it's not that we may not need the position, but if we do do this, you're not going to be able to then go and really split it like we did before. It's just gonna be, you know, cause you look at hiring somebody now to replace Wendy, her position, and they're gonna look at this and go, well, you serviced it out for this much. I'm not gonna take this additional responsibility for five thousand dollars more a year. So it's just, it was, that's why I asked Jeremy, and I wish I would've been clear head thoughts when you talked about this a while ago, to reach out to some other schools to see what they're doing and how they're doing at schools our size. I just wanted that brought up, you know, so that everybody knows that I have a feeling, cause we've added positions in the past that were supposed to be temporary, and we've just never, never relinquished them. So, just a concern, thought.
Do you want to pull that up to show?
So are you thinking, what are you thinking after the first year?
I think we reevaluate after the first year and see where we are with these positions.
Cause the thing is, is that this sticks us in a three-year contract with, and if after the first year you decide that you want to cancel, you have to give them, you know, thirty days' notice, but you still have to pay them twenty percent of the rest of the contract. So, are they requiring us to do three years, or can we just do a year and then look at it?
Um, I think every year we have an opportunity to sit down and reevaluate, and the cost may change. You know, if we say, well, we don't need you as much, we can reduce the cost. Or if it's, you know, we need more, and we could increase the cost. So I think every twelve months, we evaluate with them over these three years. And yes, like you said, if we were to decide after one year, we don't need any help at all. We would pay that twenty percent of the two years that are coming up, but I, I feel like, right now, I feel like we're gonna need three years. I, we had the, the woman who's doing our payroll camp, came in two days last week to help me with this payroll period. And I, I need help. I need her. She knows what she's doing. She knows payroll. She knows school payroll. She knows our software. She's going to be a huge help this first year for sure. And I, I think she'll get things set up so that in three years, we may, we may be able to just cancel it and, and have some efficiencies and reevaluate at that time.
And the other thing that I talked with Tim Collins about was, in the future, possibly a shared position, where we have fifty percent here, fifty percent there, or maybe between two or three school districts, who knows? But we did discuss that also.
Has this gone through our lawyer?
That contract?
Yep, for him to review?
Not yet, it hasn't.
Okay. One thing that I'm a little leery on is page six, number three. "The contractor shall be the exclusive accounting consultant for the school district." Do we have already an accounting firm that works with us?
We have our auditors. That's Burkhardt, Burkhardt.
Cause I know I've come across this one a lot, that I would just check with the lawyer to see if it needs to be reworded or the way it's worded is okay, that...
Good catch. Anything else? And I don't, do you want to show your wish, most versus?
Yeah, and I know we've talked about this for a little while, but if we were to, thinking about some stuff, if we were to have a wish list, or if we want to call it a wish list, or whatever, we, we would do is, I just listed Wendy's salary, and then executive assistant slash payroll, and then an HR specialist. So I just kind of made a wish list of what that would cost the district in today's money compared to what we're paying now. So it would save the, or the cost to the district would be more than what we're paying for SMS to do our payroll. So, just some things that I've put down and thought about since this being brought up.
The fifty-five and the sixty-two on the lines, five and six there, are from the fiftieth percentile from growth operators.
From growth operators.
And then down below in row eleven, technically, growth operators would have that at fifty-eight thousand. And we're saying we're looking for somebody at forty-five thousand. So that's in yellow because we might need to look at possibly bumping that up, depending on experience by the person that is applying.
Right.
So the cost of twenty-two, maybe twenty-seven, it could be thirty, depending on what we end up backfilling, or not backfilling, but filling Wendy's position. So, you know...
Right.
But if we went with the three originally, like the, you know, Wendy's, Matt's, and then that additional HR person that we had potentially talked about?
Or a...
It'd be almost, almost sixty thousand dollars more than us going with SMS as that third position, cause we're not paying all the benefits. Obviously, that, if, if we pay more for that one in yellow, that's gonna go down. It's not gonna be a fifty-six thousand difference.
Right. It'll go down because once you increase the salary, the benefits go up also.
Yeah.
And then it changes that number.
Okay, any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Do you want to make a motion before, or do you want to review with the...
You haven't signed the contract yet, right?
No, we do not have a signed contract. Could make a motion to approve it with...
Pending the...
Pending our lawyer, or lawyer's approval.
Okay. Well, since I brought it up, I'll make a motion to approve the SMS contract pending the lawyer's approval.
That's Sherri Dashner. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And that's Katie Cahill. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five one. Nine B. "Approve Jeremy Ehrler for designation of identified official with authority for the MDE external user access recertification system."
This is just an annual thing. Typically, the superintendent's designated as what they call the Iowa. So it allows me to go in and designate Wendy to go in and put business reports in, or anything, any other reports I have to go to the state from her, or the secretaries, or anybody. So it just allows me to go in and designate those people from our district. We just have to do an approval from the school board each year. We typically do that in July.
I would make the motion to name Jeremy Ehrler as the authorized individual for Iowa.
That's Kevin Born. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
That's Tim Elke. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries six oh. Uh, nine C, first readings of new policies. Just so you're all aware, policy four twenty-five, there will not be anything in red, because it's a, there was a lot of red that it was gonna be, so we decided to just bring it as a brand-new policy. So just read the whole thing. And then, um...
One oh two.
One oh two, we moved from the non-substantial changes to substantial because of, there were additional paragraphs that were added. So, we tried to keep the substantial to five, but some of them are kind of small, so hopefully, it's not too overwhelming for everybody to read through these.
And these are all based on the legislature, what they came out with.
Do you want to explain the student directory one, too?
Oh, yes. Let's go back to talk about student directory one. Thank you for bringing that up. We brought this one up, oh my gosh, a few months ago. And we were talking about specifically the directory information, and whether we needed the parent parent names and email addresses and everything in there. So, we met as a committee, actually called Terry Morrow from MSBA, in the middle of our committee meeting to get more clarification and understanding. So there's really two parts to this. There's the Minnesota definition, which is what we've always followed. Then there's a federal directory information. And the federal one is specific to, that we have to give this information for military. So it's the federal law, directory information is specific to military, but we follow the Minnesota one. So the only time we have to follow the federal one is if we have one of the military services reach out to us. Then we have to give them that information. Otherwise, we use the directory information under Minnesota law. Is that correct from the policy committee?
Mm-hmm. Any questions on that? I did have a question on four eighteen. "Starting in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, the school district must implement a comprehensive education pro, program on cannabis use and substance use, including but not limited to the use of fentanyl or mixtures containing fentanyl for students in the middle school and high school." on cannabis use and substance use, including but not limited to the use of fentanyl or mixtures containing fentanyl for students in the middle school and high school. Do we have an idea of like who would run that program or how we? I know it's, I know it's, uh, it's in the future, but it's just to keep a.
Yes, it's in the, um, Casey and I have been going through all the legislative stuff.
Okay.
So we have information of when stuff needs to be implemented.
Okay.
So.
So that's on your radar then to?
That is on our radar.
Perfect.
To give you an, to an answer to that would be, my guess would be is that something we're gonna put in our health classes.
Okay.
Seems like the logical place for it.
Mm-hmm. All right. Any questions on the first readings?
If you do have any questions as you're reading them, please feel free to reach out to me or anybody else on the policy committee.
And just so you know, it's Sherri, myself, and Katie on the policy committee. All right. Um, nine D, approved general work agreement with WPS for OT services. I'm not gonna talk about that at all. Any questions?
We received this today. So Wendy gotta put in the agenda. This is for Rachel Kluber. She is our occupational therapist consultant. She's not here often. But when we have a student that needs occupational therapy services, she has to come in and do the evaluation. And then she can, and then we have an occupational therapist assistant that actually comes in and does the therapy for them. That, um, the occupational therapy assistant is, um, we share with New Richmond. That goes back and forth between the buildings, but we have to have a certified occupational therapist to write up the actual plan.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as noted.
That's Tim Elke. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's Kevin Born. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion carries six oh. Ten, approved resolution, accepting donations with many thanks, and I will run through those. Um, Emmanuel Mueller donated seven Wasika Water Park punch cards for the sack field trip. The Castile family donated napkins, spoons, and forks for sack supplies. Michael and Kay Sarda donated fifty dollars for the JWP welding supplies in memory of Richard Sarda. Lake Elysian Watershed Association donated five hundred dollars for a scholarship. JWP Education Association donated fifteen hundred dollars for the scholarship. The Minnesota FFA Foundation donated, um, I guess I'm confused by that one. A hundred, did they do two donations? Is that what they are?
Two donations, one was a hundred and one was a hundred and sixty.
So two separate donations, a hundred dollars and a hundred and sixty to FFA. The Janesville Area Chamber of Commerce donated five hundred dollars. Um, I have to admit, when I saw this one, I was like, I don't remember doing that. But the, we donated, we gave them five hundred dollars to be in the parade and they probably put it towards the band shirts. So just to clarify on that, that, that they used the money towards the twenty twenty-four band shirts. Um, Janesville Memorial Day Association donated fif, three fifty dollars, um, to speech program, band program, and general fund. The Haydays Fun Ran, Fun Run donated thirty-two hundred dollars to the track program. The Bulldog Baseball Club donated a thousand dollars for the turtle shell. Casey's General Stores donated twelve dollars and sixty cents, um, for the loyalty card donation.
What's the turtle shell?
Again, the turtle shell down at the baseball field.
What's a turtle shell?
And it covers home plate when they're doing batting practice.
Oh, okay.
So the ball stays within the field.
Okay.
And the donation came from the baseball club because we've had multiple other donations that came to the school to purchase this. So the baseball club's putting in their donation. Tim, did you have another question about?
Well, it, it's not related to this, but just whatever happened to the greenhouse thing?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna ask about that too.
Yeah, the greenhouse that we went and looked at was not worth our time and effort.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we're looking at other options.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on the donations? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the donations with many thanks.
That's Tim Elke. Do we have a second?
Second.
And that's Joni Olson, and this is a resolution. Elke?
Yes.
Born?
Yes.
Dashner?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Sais?
Yes.
Motion carries six oh. Upcoming meetings, we have a curriculum and instruction committee meeting right after this. Um, and then August twenty-first, our regular meeting, September eleventh, finance and operations, and September eighteenth, our regular meeting. And we are now adjourned at six oh five. Thank you, everyone.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Couple other buildings and grounds, things that we've brought up, but I probably keep forgetting to ask when we. Have we got any updates about the stairs that we keep looking at, you know, from that lower parking lot?